I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Montgomery County Legislature for June 27, 2017, and let the record reflect at 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Diamond.
Present.
Legislator Hedwell.
Present.
Legislator Wilson.
Present.
Legislator DuChasse.
Present.
Legislator Pat.
Present.
Legislator Isabel.
Present.
Legislator Patel.
Present.
Legislator Kelly.
Present.
Legislator Sweet.
If we could all stand to salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence, let Legislator Hedwell lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. Generally, I recognize veterans that we've lost during the between meetings. At this meeting, I'd like to recognize one of our very own. We recently lost Legislator Wilson's wife, Jill. I hope that he can take some comfort in knowing that she's with his daughter Amy and that he has two angels looking down on him. So if we have a moment of silence, please. Tonight, we have two presentations, and for the first presentation, if we could have Legislator Kelly come forward, and also the dairy princess court, if they would be kind enough to come forward.
Don't forget about the common.
Come on forward, girl.
Whereas dairy farmers have contributed to the development and well-being of Montgomery County since the earliest formation, and whereas the dairy industry is a major industry in Montgomery County and takes significant and makes significant contributions to the local economy, whereas, observed for the first time in 1937 as National Milk Month, the aim of the National Dairy Month originally was, and still is, to promote consumption of dairy and dairy production. And whereas the 80th celebration of June Dairy Month highlights the dairy industry, will occur in June 2017, and whereas milk and dairy foods provide health benefits and valuable nutrients, and this annual tradition of Dairy Month helps to celebrate nearly 5,000 dairy farms in New York State and all the fresh nutritious foods that they produce, and whereas New York State produces 14 billion pounds of milk from more than 600,000 dairy cows, making it the third largest in the third-largest state in terms of milk production, and whereas New York State and the rest of the country have grown healthier and richer by celebrating and appreciating all the work and benefits that come from dairy production and consumption. Now therefore be resolved, County Executive Matthew L. Ossoffor, Legislative Chairman Roy S. Diamond, and Legislator Martin P. Kelly, on behalf of the Montgomery County Legislature hereby proclaim June 2017 is designated to the celebration of June Dairy Month, and calls upon the citizens of Montgomery County to observe the month with appropriate program and activities.
You're right, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do you guys want to say anything? No?
No. Thank you for having us come.
Good luck at the fair this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. If Legislator Pep will come forward, I'd like to recognize the Amsterdam Track and Field Team. Those folks will come forward also, please. Well, it is certainly with great pleasure and pride that I have been elected to make this presentation here tonight. It was brought to our attention by Legislator Robert Hedwell, given the fact that he is President of the New York State Track and Field Officials, and he thought it was appropriate, given his affiliation, to hand out some accolades tonight to the Amsterdam Track Team. And we have various proclamations here tonight for the individuals here, and I will do them one at a time, if it's okay. Let me start this way. This gentleman serves as both mentor and master motivator of the Amsterdam High School Boys and Girls Indoor and Outdoor Track and Field Teams. He was honored by the county in May as part of the Students and Educators Made of Something Stronger event for his work in the Greater Amsterdam School District as a track coach and global history teacher. He's been in the district for nine years and is always willing to go the extra mile to improve the track program. He was also one heck of a place kicker for the Amsterdam Rugged Rams in the early 2000s, winning a few games, if I recall properly, for them with some last-second field goals. And I know that firsthand because I used to do the games on the radio, and that is none other than Coach Kevin Willery. Kevin? We have two proclamations here. Kevin, I'll read one of them. One of them says, "Certificate, the County of Montgomery issues and authorizes execution of this certificate to Amsterdam Boys Track and Field for representing Amsterdam High School in such a positive manner while exhibiting traits of hard work, commitment, and dedication, and in recognition of the tremendous success the student athletes and coaches have enjoyed in recent years." You have one for both the girls and the boys' track and field team. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
This young man qualified for the New York State Indoor Meet in March and Outdoor Meet in June. At the indoor meet, he placed second in the New York State Meet in the 55-meter dash with a time of 6.45 seconds. He placed fifth at the state meet in the long jump with a distance of 22 feet 11 and 1/2 inches, and in the outdoor meet in the 100-meter dash, he placed sixth in that state meet with a time of 10.73 seconds. And in the long jump, he broke the nearly 50-year-old school record with a leap of 23 feet and 3 inches and qualified for the states, and that is Mr. Kevin Bouchard. Kevin? Our next recipient, this young lady was the first Amsterdam girl to qualify for the New York State Championship in an individual event in more than 20 years. She placed sixth at the indoor meet in the 55-meter hurdles with a time of 8.41 seconds. She placed sixth in the outdoor meet in the 100-meter hurdles in a school record time of 14.65 seconds, breaking her aunt Marie Davies' 20-year-old school record, who I know very well as well. Also ran a 4x400-meter relay in the state qualifier and helped break the school record, and that is none other than Ms. Gabby Stanovich. This young lady was part of the 4x400-meter relay team that was first in school history to qualify for the New York State Championship Meet. The relay team broke the school record and placed sixth at the New York State Meet with a time of 4 minutes and 3.77 seconds. Ms. Lauren Santiago. This young lady was also part of that 4x400-meter relay team, first in school history. I won't repeat this three more times because there's four of them here. You get the idea, and that is Ms. Adina Sanchez.
She's not here.
She's not here, okay. This young lady was also part of that 4x400-meter relay team. That was the first in school history to qualify for the New York State Championship Meet, Ms. Olivia Lazaro. And this young lady was also part of that 4x400-meter relay team, first in school history to qualify for that New York State Championship Meet, Ms. Brenda Santana. Congratulations, Brenda. Thank you all for your applause here. And this is our assistant coach, correct? Mr. Stu Palzak.
Good. Thank you. Thanks so much for coming down.
Thank you.
You guys are unbelievable.
Now, at this moment, I'd like to open to the public for the public comment section. For anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step towards the room. Tonight, we have Conservative Chairman with us, Pete Phelps. Pete?
Thank you, fellow.
We'll move on to Communications. Madam Clerk.
I gave you all a copy of an email that we received today from NISAC. The governor has called an extraordinary session for tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Our hopes are that they will be addressing the sales tax extension, but we don't know that, so keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the approval minutes. We don't have any this month, so we'll move right on to the budgetary transfers. So I'm looking for a motion in a second for the budgetary transfers from May 17 to June 21, 2017. Any legislation? Legislator Pep? Legislator Wilson? All in favor, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Next, we have the aggregate budgetary transfers for May 2017. Looking for a motion in a second. Legislator Patel? Legislator Hedwell? Discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Next, we have the acceptance of our procurement record. Record is for May 2017. Looking for a motion in a second. Legislator Wilson? Legislator Pep? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Under Old Business, we have Resolution 116 of 2017. Legislator Patel?
I'd like to make a motion.
With a motion, do we have a second? Legislator Isabel? Discussion. Hearing none? All in favor of moving the resolution off the table, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So that resolution will be first when we get to the resolutions. Right now, I'd look for a motion in a second to suspend the rules. We have four or five additional add-on resolutions, so I'd need a motion. Legislator Pep? Legislator DuChasse? Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We'll move on.
Resolutions 168, 172 are added to your agendas, but you'll have to refresh. I'm going to see them. I'm going to see them. If you don't have a I, you should be able to.
Resolution 116, "Resolution Amending to 2017 Operating Budget and Establishing the Position of Assistant Deputy County Clerk." Sponsors were legislators DuChasse and Wilson. Discussion. Legislator Patel?
After we've done the discussion, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay. We have a motion to amend. We need a second. Legislator Wilson? Did you want to?
I agree if you'd like. I'd like to strike the first resolved clause and replace it with a transfer from A-17-4-4310-00.1110 to 302, Department of State Services, $16,635.23. New Assistant Deputy County Clerk, $16,635.23.
Discussion on the amendment. Legislator Hedwell?
I want to start by saying that I'm not saying that this position is not necessary. However, I do not feel that, you know, this is just a, I don't feel to take money from the fund balance or from a position that was consolidated with another position. To save money should be used to fund this position. It was a consolidation of two departments. This was a savings. It was supposed to be a savings and not to be used to support another position. I think if we're going to, I have no problems supporting this position as a part-time position and then letting it go through the budget process and be put into the regular budget. However, I do not support this the way this is done.
Any further discussion? Legislator DuChasse?
I support this resolution. When the subject first came up, the county clerk was asked to substantiate the request. I think that was done in proper form. A lot of questions were answered. A lot of justifications were put forth. That allows me to support this. I think, I understand that these notions with respect to the budget when it comes to holding the line and transfers and all of those things, but at the same time, these numbers really represent the work that is being done in the coming. And so, given the fact that the case was made and substantiated, I remain in support.
Thank you, Legislator DuChasse. Any further discussion? Legislator Pep?
Do we know how much the amount of money that was saved from the elimination of the other position, this dollar amount represents the percentage of?
Okay.
Did we save $50,000 and we're using $16,000 over here?
Sure. Sean gave you that.
Do you have it? Oh, clear.
He, the county treasurer said it was $47,000 left in the account. This 16 would be.
A third of it. Correct. Thank you. Any further discussion? Legislator Isabel?
I just want to commend her for doing a good job. She, her department collects an awful lot of revenue for the county in her various departments. She supervises them, and I appreciate the work that she does for us.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Hedwell?
When transfers are made, say, from one department to another department, does that department have any, you know, was this other department ever, did they agree to this? I mean, I don't know if that money was going to be used. I mean, I'd much rather see, you know, at least something saying that, you know, they approved this money being transferred or being used somewhere else versus just something like this outside, you know, in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Who was opposed?
Legislator Kelly, Legislator Hedwell.
The amendment passed.
Now, we'll vote on the resolution as amended. All those, we could do a roll call vote for that.
No discussion?
Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Legislator DuChasse?
Aye.
Legislator Pat?
Aye.
Legislator Isabel?
Aye.
Legislator Patel?
Aye.
Legislator Kelly?
Nay.
Chairman Diamond?
Nay.
Legislator Hedwell?
Nay.
Legislator Wilson?
Aye.
Pass.
Resolution 147, "Resolution Accepting Grant Application for the Montgomery County Public Safety Emergency Service Facility Project," Department of Environmental Conservation. Sponsors were legislators Pep and Isabel. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution 148, "Resolution in Support of an Application Through the Consolidated Funding Application," CFA 2017 Round, through the New York State Division of Homes and Community Renewal. Community Development Grant, Micro-Enterprise Program by Montgomery County for 2017 Montgomery County Agriculture Micro-Enterprise Program. Sponsors were legislators Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Yes.
Resolution 149, "Resolution in Support of an Application Through the Consolidated Funding Application," CFA 2017 Round, through the New York State Division of Homes and Community Renewal. Community Development Block Grant, Public Facilities Program by Montgomery County for 2017 Old Courthouse Rehabilitation Project. Sponsors were legislators Pep and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Resolution 150, "Resolution Accepting Grant Application for Montgomery County Charging Station Project and Amending to 2017 Operating Budget," Department of Environmental Conservation. Sponsors were legislators Isabel and Diamond. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution 151, "Resolution Accepting Funding and Authorizing the County Executive to Enter into a Contract for the Childrens with Special Healthcare Needs." Sponsors were legislators Pep and Patel. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Yes.
Resolution Amending to 2017 Operating Budget, New York State Department of Health, 2017 Local Health Department Performance Incentive Award. Excuse me. Sponsors were legislators Kelly and Diamond. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Yes.
Resolution 153, "Resolution Amending to 2017 Operating Budget, Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, Carryover Funds." Sponsors were legislators Kelly and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution 154, "Resolution Amending to 2017 Operating Budget, Sheriff Department." Sponsors were legislators Patel and Wilson. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Resolution 155, "Resolution Amending to 2017 Operating Budget, Mandated Salary Increase for District Attorney." Sponsors were legislators Pep and Patel. Discussion. I'd like to make an amendment to that resolution, and I would like to change the increase from A599, the appropriated fund balance, to budget item number 1165.00.4471. And I would sponsor that. I need a second. Legislator Patel?
What's the, what's the person that?
My. Part of point. Discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, just wondering, what is the nature of this vote if the salary increase is mandated anyway? Just as a supposition, what if we did not pass this? Still have to make payment, right?
Correct, yes. Thank you. Yeah, the only thing I'm changing is where the money's coming from. So instead of the fund balance, we're taking it from their own home budget. But yet, you're correct. We have no choice. As Legislator Kelly pointed out last week, it's a state mandate. Any further discussion on the amendment? Legislator Isabel?
The increase next year is considerably more than 1%. Correct?
Correct.
And that's also mandated. We have no choice.
We have no choice.
You're aware of it. It's a fact anyway.
Yeah. They're well aware of it, and they'll budget probably for it for next year. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Legislator Kelly? Abstentions? All those in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Legislator Kelly? Abstentions?
Resolution passed.
Resolution 156. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign an agreement, 2017 Resource Allocation Plan and amending the 2017 Operating Budget. Sponsors were Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 157. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign an agreement, 2017 Resource Allocation Plan and amending the 2017 Operating Budget. Sponsors were Wilson and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 157. Resolution amending budget with forfeiture money, District Attorney. The sponsors were legislators Pertel and Pep. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 158. Resolution amending the 2017 Operating Budget, Stop DWI. Sponsors were legislators Wilson and Pep. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 159. Resolution amending the 2017 Operating Budget to Transfer Funds for Youth Day, 2017. Sponsors were legislators Kelly and Pertel. Discussion. The only thing I would say, and the same thing I said last year, is that I support this program very much. I'd just like to see them budget in advance for this. Legislator Kelly?
That was a donation made.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. All those, hearing no more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 160. Resolution establishing the position of clerk typus part-time and eliminating the position of senior clerk typus in the public defender's office. Sponsors were legislators Pep and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 161. Resolution authorizing county executive to execute an agreement with JMC Architects and planners PC to prepare design plans and bid specifications for the proposed FMCC Campus Bathrooms and Locker Room Project. Sponsors were legislators Hedwell and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 162. Resolution setting the date of the public hearing of the FMCC Proposed 2017-2018 Budget. And I think we have a July, uh...
July 25th?
25th date at 6:55. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 163. Resolution appointing members to the audit committee. Sponsors were legislators Diamond and Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Abstain.
Pass.
Resolution approving abstract of audit claims. Sponsors were legislators Hedwell and Pertel. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 165. Resolution authorizing county executive to execute a release with Gallagher Basset National Fire Insurance Company of Hartford and McKee Risk Management, County Legislature. Discussion.
Just for clarification, that's where the jail of the security system is.
That's correct. And our county attorney, we thought originally we were going to get anything back and we ended up getting $200,000 back thanks to her hard work. So, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 166. Resolution authorizing acceptance of report and release of MOSA receiver and distributions to Montgomery, Atzigos, Caheri Counties and receiver. Sponsors were legislators Pertel and Wilson. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit more about how this works, that the receiver has made the determination as to what these amounts are and that's what we're going by?
That's correct, yes. So Montgomery County would be receiving $286,304.54. Legislator Pertel?
That was based on a predetermined ration or ratio. I think you're correct. Similar to the rest of the agreement?
It was according to the percentages that were initially established.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Resolution 167. Resolution authorizing issuance pursuant to Section 19 dot 10 of local finance law and refunding bonds of Montgomery County, New York to be designated substantially Montgomery County, New York Refunding Serial Bonds 2017 and providing for other matters in relation thereto and the payments of the bond to be refunded thereby. Sponsors were legislators Pertel and Diamond. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Pass.
Resolution 168. Resolution supporting Assembly Bill 807935, which would enact legislation to extend certain provisions of the tax law and other laws relating thereto relates to extending for two years the authorization of additional sales and use tax for the county of Montgomery November 30, 2017 until November 30, 2019. This bill did not go through committee. And, discussion. Oh, I need, we need a sponsor in a second. Legislator Pep? Legislator Pertel? Discussion. So this, I'll tell you a little bit about it. This was a bill that we're asking the Assembly to go back into session for suddenly in Santa Barbara and my counterpart in the Assembly, Carl Heasty, to get off the couch, get back to Albany and pass this bill so we can get our money. And that's what it's all about. I wholeheartedly ask them to do the job that they were elected to do. We, Montgomery County, you know, we're not that concerned with who runs the city school district in New York, or we're not concerned about the charter schools, but we are definitely concerned about the four or five million dollars that affects our budget. So, that's what this resolution is about and I would appreciate your support on this. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Pass.
Next resolution is, uh... Resolution supporting the Senate bills. Senate 6827, an act to amend the parts recreation historic preservation law in relationship to renaming the Tappan Zee Bridge and the highway in relation to naming the Tappan Zee the Governor Mario M. Como Bridge. I need a sponsor. I'll sponsor. I need a second. Legislator Hedwell? Discussion. This, this bill is a Senate bill that has already passed. Again, the Assembly needs to come back and either vote it up or down. The renaming of the Tappan Zee to Governor Mario Como. I think, you know, all of us have disagreed with Governor Como throughout his tenure. But one thing I think we can all agree on is that he was a champion of the rights of the, of the working class, working people, and I think he was a champion of the poor and struggling middle class, which represents Montgomery County. That's why I'm in favor of this. The other association has to Montgomery County, like legislator Duceci, he often would quote tales of, Tale of Two Cities. So, again, that rings, rings home. But seriously, I think that we should support this bill and look forward to any further discussion.
Chair, who's the person?
I sponsored it and then legislator Hedwell.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Legislator Kelly? Legislator Wilson? Abstain?
Pass.
Resolution authorizing county executive to sign agreement with Gattuso Contracting. We need a sponsor in a second. Legislator Hedwell? Legislator Pep? Discussion.
Chair.
Legislator Pertel?
Could you, or someone, maybe Eric, give us a little better understanding of what this is about?
Mr.?
I didn't read it. I didn't put it up.
Background information on this one is, as you know, the transfer stations are being operated by Gattuso. Part of the initial discussion was that they wanted to rent county equipment.
They had extra equipment.
Yeah. So, in order to do that, you need a resolution. And it should end up being $1,700 a month coming back to the county all the way from January 1st.
Legislator Pertel?
Do we assume any liability by them renting our equipment? I know somebody's crane over there is not in great condition. Does it put us in a position? Are we in the same position if we approve this or disapprove this with things like that, the crane?
So they have insurance coverage, they're bonding through the equipment, and they're also taking out an insurance policy on the equipment as well. And they're, and they're going to be subject to regular checks, which will be done by the Commissioner and DPDW to ensure the equipment is not being abused. So that definitely cuts down on liability.
So if the crane breaks, they're taking responsibility for it? Where do we draw the line of who's responsible for used equipment?
Well, that always ends up being an argument. But, but they have multiple insurance policies in place to be at the site. They have one anyway who did their regular contract to be there working at the site with the county as an, as an additional insurer. And then also they're going to have policies for the equipment too.
I'm not concerned about the liability of someone getting hurt following any concern.
Okay.
I'm concerned about our liability as the owner currently of the equipment there that's 10 to 15 years old and in questionable condition. Are they taking responsibility for the equipment and the state it is in and to keep it in good repair?
Yes.
If it breaks, they're responsible?
Yes. Yep. We have very strict language in the contract about that. If it breaks, if anything happens to it, I believe it's within 10 or 15 days, it needs to be replaced and satisfaction with the Commissioner.
Yeah. If, the way, the way we stipulated was, was just that if anything that they don't notify myself, my office, within a certain period of time and I find it upon inspection, they have to replace that equipment based on the value of prior to the signing of the contract. They have to provide that back to the company. So, so if the equipment was worth $20,000 prior and there's X amount of damage done to it and they didn't notify us, they owe us that value of that equipment prior to the signing of this contract. So for clarification, crane breaks down the day after the executive signs this, who's responsible for repairing it? And if it's not able to be repaired?
They will pay for it.
They will pay for it. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Pass.
Resolution authorizing county executive to sign agreement with CT Mail Associates for architectural engineering services, emergency management and garage storage facility. Looking for a sponsor in a second. Legislator Wilson? Legislator Hedwell? Discussion. Legislator Pep?
Eric, I just wanted to ask, you know, we've seen the amount of money, you know, that we're, that this is going to cost, how much of a grid, how much, but we've never seen a detailed cost budget on the project.
I have that to present.
They have a presentation. I just wanted to make sure that was, this total that we're looking to approve here was well within the guidelines of the soft and hard costs of the project.
Yeah. And Cheryl actually has that, I'll give it to her in PDF tonight because she can, her thumb drive ready so she can, and I have Willie Rich, Campagnola, and Joe Highland from CT Mail that can explain exactly what their service is and the breakdown of the building and what the actual building is going to look like where it's going to set. If you had any questions for them.
Rich and Joe, you want to step up and then we'll go through the PDF at your...
Eric, there's several files on here. I don't know which one.
F requ.
It's a PowerPoint presentation.
Is that presentation?
Yeah. It's a PPT. Yeah, it's a PPT.
They'll just have to tell me one of the...
Okay. Basically, CT Mail submitted our qualification statement in response to the RFQ that was issued by the county. Next slide. We've been working actually on the site since 2014, assisting the county in planning for the relocation of all of emergency management services, of course, with the expansion to the public safety facility that's now completed. This was part of that planning in which we are looking at the south end of the site, located next to the existing sheriff's garage across the drive, park drive from that to locate this new storage facility. Next slide. Just another view of the aerial of that site, again, to the top of the page, joining or across from the existing sheriff's garage. Basically, that area has already been cleared and working with Public Works to prep that site in response to where the building will be located based upon our planning.
So Joe, if you were to look that works up Montgomery County?
I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's all right. Last slide.
Actually, next to the vehicle storage area that's fenced in to the top of the page where the garage is, for the sheriff's garage, they'll go right across to the Clark Drive from that.
Where the trailer was.
Right, right, exactly where the trailer was, correct.
Thank you.
Next slide. So basically, we'll be working with the existing site, the storage that's already out there. I have a few slides that took back in 2014. Next one. Some sheriff's vehicles, because this is a shared facility, it's designed to accommodate both the sheriff and emergency management for their vehicles that are currently not sheltered. Next slide. We've taken dimensions for all those equipment to make sure they will be accommodated by the new facility. There's quite a number of pieces. Again, this is the second phase of this movement of emergency management, getting all of their current vehicles out of the flood zone and up to this site. CT Mail, when we were originally doing the planning for the expansion of the public safety facility, did the survey of this area already in preparation for the work that was done by Department of Public Works. We had also done geotechnical evaluation on the site and taken several wharrens at this location in preparation for the project. So basically, what we've designed is a relatively simple facility, garage doors all facing towards the existing sheriff's uh towards the existing sheriff's garage, onto uh Clark Drive, to the left side being emergency management's uh vehicles, to the right side, the sheriff's vehicles, which are currently not sheltered, center bay to be used for additional uh storage expansion and mechanical space. This is gonna basically be a low-temperature uh storage facility uh for vehicles, a low-hazard uh vehicle storage uh facility, but it still needs to be designed as what we call under the Code of New York State, an essential facility, meaning it must withstand greater snow, wind, and even earthquake loads because of the storage of the type of vehicles that are in there.
Legislator Pertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How many garage doors will there be? I know one of the big problems with that other building is that everything is stacked in there, and you couldn't, if you had to get something, you had to move everything out, and I'm trying to count what from what I can see from here. You got five on one side and
Actually, sheriff is being accommodated by four, and we've laid out each of those trailers, the primary trailers, for a vehicle to come right up to the garage door. On the emergency management side, we've got a total of six doors with the one center additional storage.
Okay, that one's mine. And the heat, the heat will be geothermal?
Uh in this particular case, we're looking at using a radiant heating system. Again, it's keeping it at minimum temperatures, it prevents freezing, uh really because of the size of the the facility, the other thing we have to do with sharing facility is a firewall separation between two storage areas.
Thank you.
Uh just a little plan, again, you can see we've dimensioned out all the vehicles to make sure they're accommodated, and we also want to make sure in sizing this, these are large 14 by 14 door openings, it's not gonna be tight residential type doors, maintaining safe operating clearances for anybody has to man and then attach and work off the vehicles. So there's plenty of clearances, OSHA standards and things like that. Basic garage, we're gonna try to emulate some of the uh roof types, again, the what's called Dutch gable roofs, similar to the existing facility. You are gonna be seeing basically a series of thermally insulated overhead doors across the face. Uh we know in working in the last time, because of the age of the existing building, we're not gonna be trying to exactly match the existing building, but we're gonna do the same theme of things. This is a different type of facility than the public safety facility that's up there, we won't be using a lot of masonry and things like that, it'll be a pre-engineered metal structure. And again, just to give you some views to attempt the aesthetics of the existing to tie in with the existing buildings. An example of the pre-engineered type of metal building system that we'll be looking at, but again, along the aesthetics of the line of what we're showing.
Legislator Pertel.
Will it be a Morton building?
Uh because it is a Public Works project, we're gonna be designing on the basis of design, Morton will be one of the available manufacturers, and we've worked with them on a national level to get the dungeon pricing for this project.
Thank you.
Uh the interior liner, really a little different than what's in the sheriff's garage right now, basically, uh we'll have a hybrid steel interior, it'll be well insulated to meet up current energy code requirements, uh also well lit for anyone who needs to work uh with the equipment that's stored in the facility. As I said, we have done budget estimates, this is back from 2015, we have done detailed uh estimate, we have worked with several major national manufacturers, including the pre-engineered building system, as well as the mechanical equipment systems that will be going inside the building. Part of the services that we'll be doing, and we just can go through a series of slides here.
May I interrupt?
Sure, legislator, you can say it.
I don't know if you remember me, my name is John DuChessey.
Yes, sir.
The last time we did budget estimates, they didn't work out so well, as I recall.
In this particular case, CT Mail will not be working with a construction manager with the county hire the last time, we're doing all the services in-house. CT Mail has worked, as I said, this particular case directly with number manufacturers. This is a much simpler and smaller building, I got only a few manufacturers that are really gonna be involved in the whole project, and based upon those detailed costs that we have, we're confident in working with Department of Public Works that we won't need to bring in a construction manager.
Yeah, I think my problem was that the assurance is that the budget was on track before we went out to bid, but this time we're pretty much know where this is gonna land.
Upfront. Again, we won't be depending upon a construction manager to do estimates, we're basing our estimates on actual prices we received.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, the cost, which I understand with the amount that has been funded for the project, our first task will be to reevaluate this, this original budget that was presented uh was done in 2015, we have updated it since with our manufacturers, and we will guarantee the architectural engineering fees that were originally budgeted as our future project.
Legislator Wilson.
What kind of warranty would they have on a building like that?
Pre-engineered building as opposed to what we did up the hill on conventional construction, that's basically a GC one-year, two-year warranty. Pre-engineered manufacturers that we're talking to, 50-year structures, 35-year on the paint and then metal finishes. So these are long-term warranties that will be guaranteed to the county.
Anything else?
Can I save this presentation to send to everybody?
Yes, you.
Legislator Pertel. Uh I believe that in the policies of Montgomery County, I think over $350,000 has an apprenticeship training program clause, is that included in the bed specs?
Yes. What we will do is again, this will be a Public Works project, there'll be wage rate requirement, part of that will be those regulations, and we always work with county attorney on all the supplemental instructions that have to go into the documents.
Questioner, may I, anything? Covered everything?
Well, well. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Flash drives us.
Cheers.
Any other?
Any further discussion?
I copy Alice's files, don't worry.
We aim to please.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Last resolution of the evening, resolution 172, resolution supporting the municipal consolidation and efficiency plan as submitted by Montgomery County and its constituent municipalities. Looking for a sponsor in a second. Legislator Pep? Legislator Hedwell? Discussion.
Chair.
Legislator Pertel.
Do we have a copy of the uh
Do we? Uh we don't have one right here, but we could definitely get one for you. Fred Amanda?
Not yet.
This is what um Matt and Bill Royer have been working on with the municipalities. Legislator Kelly.
It does exist, though.
There's definitely a plan, that's what we're submitting to the state to to get the $20 million.
I do know that other municipalities are voting on this, moving the county, correct?
Although every municipality that's involved has sponsored and passed a resolution. Um we're one of six counties, and uh the amount for consolidation is $20 million. Legislators Kelly.
Can we have it electronically?
Certainly. Legislator Pertel.
I'll support this in the interest that it's due tomorrow, but it would be nice if in the future, when we're building something like this, we have a copy of it.
Understood, it's not attached, but
If you're like the American healthcare back.
What's that?
I I yeah, I mean, I, the plan is probably, so.
It's still like, look at the pictures.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I'll let you know. Um under others, uh we're wanting to announce a special meeting for Thursday, July 6th at 6:00 PM, and uh Meg, what is the topic? The Beach Nut? Uh in reference to our uh Beach Nut exit 29 project.
What time is that?
It's uh Thursday, July 6th at 6:00 PM.
Is there another day we can share some of the conflict?
I think it's a timely issue, isn't it?
Um yeah, I mean, the sooner we can work meeting on it, the better.
Um also, before we adjourn, uh I'd like to thank uh Clerk of the Legislature and our county attorney for our help um with the meeting this evening, also like to thank our department heads and our staff for attending. Um that said, I've been looking for a motion to adjourn. Legislator Pertel, legislator Kelly, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 8 o'clock.